Okay, good evening. Welcome to the final Environment Committee of 2021.
Right, apologies for absence. So we have apologies from councillor Davis, councillor Whitlock, councillor O'Donoghue, councillor Ossie Bogan.
Councillor Shaker.
And councillor Shaker and from Lee Phillips. Well, we are core here. So we are core, so if members agree to accept those.
Okay. Okay, any declarations of interest in each of the proposals? As well as our House of 13, whatever our proposal is will come to the Community Board at some point. Don't want prejudice, no it's not prejudice, it's just the interest.
I disagree with you.
It's just the interest.
They think it's prejudicial, let me say something prejudicial wouldn't be in it.
What can you add? Right, yeah, minutes of the last meeting, which was back on the 18th of October. Were they accurate record of meeting?
I was very brave, yeah.
Second. So what happened with that?
We're much more than.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Right, Action Report. I think we're mostly of interest around the agenda.
We have, there is one I missed from the Action Report, I need to apologize for that, which is the survey work these have done in the community centre. That dropped off, so I'll make sure that's back the next time, hopefully we'll have a better update the next time that we put in or done. Is that just a building survey? Yes. It's a set of conditions that face.
It's an historical one, Warren, perhaps when you get shots, get up to date on it, it's about the building, all it's best to do with, you know, the cost and stuff.
Any questions on the Action Report?
Hi to my Chair, the Holocaust Memorial Stone, we seem to have been hopefully going to be done by mid-December, I just wondered where we were with that.
So Lee was hopefully this week going to be meeting with the contractor at Jane Morris to actually get the stone moved from the Rockford Centre down to Borton Park. Until Lee's back in the office, we're going to work out where we are with that. The artist that we're using has had a lot of time in his diary to actually come and chisel words and fill it on to it. So fingers crossed and everybody being well, it should be done and completed by the date in January, which is actually the National Holocaust Memorial Day.
It's 28th of April next year.
It's January.
According to the Jewish calendar, I'm at that.
Definitely a January date that we're working to.
Is that, well, that's fine, I'm happy about that. I just didn't want it to slip by because if we're going to have any sort of ceremony and we wanted a rabbi there or anything, you know, one, and we'd have the plan ahead for that and therefore, you know, we don't want to be shuddering into the ground the day before, really, do we? But, yeah, please do check, but as I said, I looked at Jewish calendar yesterday and it seemed to say eight.
No, according to Holocaust Memorial Trust, it's Holocaust Memorial Day on the 20th of January.
Very well, yeah.
Okay, okay, Robert?
Yeah, just to say that it's on the agenda for the next Environment Committee to actually sort out the civic side of it and the invite and it's just to make sure we follow, you know, the law of tenancy list type thing to actually arrange it, to make sure we don't miss anyone in pro per pop it. Obviously to then work with the mayor to, who'll be leaving on the ceremony on our part, so it's sort of down there on the next meeting, it should be agreed to. As we sort of scroll around to fund it, it's councillor Ruud Nieuwhorst, hopefully he'll be right there as well.
That's good, thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Now, John?
Yeah, with reference to the Holocaust Memorial Trust, have we registered it as a ceremony that will be happening across the UK? Because on the Memorial Trust website, you can do that, you can click on the link and say, this is going to be happening, blah, 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 blah.
No, but I would investigate that.
Okay, it's simply hm d dot org dot U K.
Thank you. And then Action seven, which is the flood response. Hopefully the section 18 report will be published even in the year, so I'd imagine that's going to keep me around the next agenda potentially for that to come. Right, well, let's move on to item five, the agenda. Which is budgets, so apart from what you see the latest findings?
Don't think currently this is the Chair, I have to say questions.
Thank you, any questions on the budgets for this year?
Now confirmed, or repented, I asked some questions after, then all of them were answered, not content that the budgets are fine. In the sense that the budget first budget, they're fine, because we have a bit of an expenditure, but on that point, yes.
Okay, okay, so, oh, John?
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to go through it page by page, Warren, but on, on page two, with regards to Lace Hill, it's got solar income, are we getting any export tariff back yet? I know it's not a tariff, export money back, and are the electricity bills coming down? I mean, are we seeing the effect yet? I know it's the middle of winter and there are shorter days, but there have been some sunny days.
So I last spoke to Lee about this about two weeks ago, he was still trying to get the best deal, so electricity suppliers were not being forthcoming in getting back quickly, given other issues they were dealing with. But he was confident we'd have it done in the next few weeks, so as far as I know, we haven't got income coming in yet, but we are on the cusp of having information. So hopefully we'll have some information on the power getting back to them as well.
Good, because the issue is probably the times that we use electricity the most will be in the evenings, when of course the sun's gone down, at least for most of the year anyway. I still think we should be looking into purchasing batteries of some kind as a long-term solution to that, but that's another matter.
And the second priority question, which I think is quite important, have we had any bills yet to see if there's been any impact on the use of?
No, we haven't yet, so, so hopefully by next meeting we will have done so.
Okay, and that gives us move on to item five point two, to receive and discuss a written report proposing budget changes for 2022, 23.
Thank you Chair, so hopefully the report's as clear as it can be with the amount of numbers it has in it. So the last meeting we discussed key changes which are all reflected in the report. What you now have is the proposed budget for next year, it had included 3.5% uplift for inflation and forecast for salaries, which is what I'll give to each committee. And obviously we'll take a view across the council, I guess, for those rates at some point. I've added in an additional item of £5,000 cost for the community centre, but I noted that that is going, is coming from the resources budget, so it's an increase on this budget, not the council's overall budget. And additional in my reserve of whatever's left in the community service budget, simply because they haven't yet turned out for the year because of previous projections. And hopefully it'll be a backbone next year that we'll want to fund more than we usually would.
Okay. Not any questions on the budget, so I've got John with Norman.
Yeah, just to.
John for us?
Yeah, just a question, I know it's one of your ambitions, one of our collective ambitions, to have the solar panels on the community centre, is that, is that in the budget somewhere for that?
So the funding for solar panels on the community centre is coming out of the Home Bonus, so that money still sits with Buckinghamshire Council, so we have, it is confirmed it is there for the next financial year as well, but we do need to get spent next financial year. So we'll draw it down from then, once we've got the climate in for it.
Okay, I see that you've, yeah, thank you, I forgot about that, but I can see you added in some money for solar income, the forecast income for £2,000 for next year. Is there any forecast income for the solar panels on the community centre?
I haven't dared be that bold yet, no.
Okay.
That's simple, uh, Robert?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I went through it, the, okay, just to say that I did question some of the things I've mentioned, I think that I asked that it's not a decision over the community centre grant decision, in the sense that we give the money now paid on to your budget chairman, and it should, it's in the sense that they never took it forward. I think we need to ration out that, so I hope it will go to resources to discuss why that is, because it's important that it's an extra thing which is paid here and there's a reason for that, and I don't think discussing the reason for tonight is the right thing, but I do think it needs to be discussed because it needs to be, and it'll be connected with lots of other things that are going on, but I do think that needs to go through, but I think the budget was pretty much what I expected. It shows what we've got to maintain and what we are doing, and it shows that these things still cost more money to maintain, so I'm very happy, suppose we could agree with that.
Any other questions on the budget? Okay, I've already warned the town clerk that I'm not particularly happy that we're looking at an increase and there's an opportunity to keep a close eye on our, on our budgets and our expenditure. So we shall see how the other committees put forward their recommendations, but I am keen we keep a very close eye on our expenditure when we get best value for our money. But I'm not seeing any dissent from the proposal from the town clerk, so happy to, is anyone second Robin's proposal? Well, that's what I have to start with, Mr. So voted by Robin and seconded by councillor Ralph, to agree the proposals. Have someone else about, okay? All right. Excellent, so we move on to item six, which is a review of quick litter, quick initiative in British White Paper.
Yep, so it's a review of the Quick Litter Pick Scheme which we installed in Borton Park some six months ago now, so it's, it's a new start of initiative for us to tackle and some increasing reports of litter predominantly in the hotspots around Borton Park and throughout Covid. You'll notice from the report, I've put in some of the successes from it, there has been a noted reduction in littering in Borton Park. I mean, it's hard to gauge how much it's been used, other than noting how many times a bin has been replaced, but definitely our team have seen bags left full of rubbish from the litter fairies for them to collect and dispose of, so I think that's a good sign that people are doing sort of self-directed litter picks. We've also had a number of requests from other parishes and local councils as well for information on this particular initiative, so it seems to appeal to, to other authorities, it's something we could get on board with. So, so that's great in terms of sharing best practice. Originally when we took this idea on, we had outlined Chandos Park as an additional location if it was to prove success. So really it's down to members to determine whether or not that is the case and whether we want to move forward with another station in Borton, Chandos, sorry, Park.
Thank you very much. As well as the interesting challenges, it's not an expensive outlay, it was about £220, it doesn't matter. But of course our budgets for next year will involve a big increase in wasted spoils, I just wondered, is there any link to success in litter picking or leaving rubbish behind rather than taking it, what are the aggregate waste collection costs?
And I think the waste collection costs are more linked to recycling for the first, the new recycling bin, where there was some additional waste later this summer, but.
Okay, I think I should roll it up first.
Yeah, and just thank you, Karen, firstly the lovely picture of Nari Nedden in the report, and she looks really grand there by the bin and, and I warned you to make a comment that, are we sure we've got enough litter pickers? Because during some events, we had, or where are they, and then they had a bit of a, oh, to be fair to the staff, I know where they were. Just have we got enough period litter pickers, because when they're out, because they were purchased for events and then they've gone out here, which is a really good use of them. They've gone out to whatever, well, councillor Murray is convinced that they were purchased for events, I take councillor Murray's, it's been a word at that, that's what he's telling me, so that's what he believes, so that's fine, I know they're purchased for the use of the council, but they weren't there when we wanted to do so, are we sure we've got enough or should we purchase some more? Because if we're going to expand it into Chandos Park, which I think is the right thing to do, we need to be sure we've got enough litter pickers plus ones that we can easily access, like for picking up after events.
So there are two questions there, so one is where have the litter pickers gone? Because I was under the impression of the special four, the special pick unit, and the secondly, if you look at your paper, there is a proposal to buy new litter pickers for this second site.
So the first one, we did buy litter pickers specifically for it, so that's a totally separate issue.
So there nothing, that's fine, that's an erroneous question, it was blown in my ear, and that's fine.
Enough, Chair says the proposal is to buy additional to pick this for the world, so again, that would.
No, of course, I think. I don't know what goes this way, I'm going to remind myself, this is this is what it isn't.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Margaret, in the next.
Just really that, I think one of the negative impacts of the pandemic has been, well, it's been positive in the sense that more people have been using the parks, but unfortunately, I think the percentage of people in the domestic homes increased. And, you know, I know the universities have similar issues with littering and, so I guess that that's why we had to increase. And I think the Green Spaces team have been going around more frequently to empty the bins that we're responsible for as well. And anything we can do to help, you know, such as this quick litter pick initiative has to be a good thing. But I suppose it's an education thing again, isn't it, to try and encourage people not to drop it in the first place.
For the small amount of our way, if it's in the budget for this year, it sounds like a good thing to extend and see how it goes.
I can clear that up, I mean, the thing is, we, we, we'd like each of our parks to see a future, we don't, we live in a certain time, and we don't know what summer will be like, but there are so many people in the parks in the summer, just getting out, spreading out and maybe keep lifting, so if this actually means they take care of their own, it's got to be a good thing, hasn't it?
And there's an interesting point that Margaret raises about with Chandos Park being close to two schools, three schools really, and of course Borden Meadow is quite close to Borden Park, is there a way of maybe encouraging occasional use of this site's supply schools?
I mean, myself and the Office of Brentford, we've recently been spoken to, the senior schools, not only at Local Democracy Week, but we've been back to the Borden School because they've requested for more information on climate change and what the council are doing. They picked up on the Quick Litter Pick Scheme and they are really interested in, you know, in how they can tackle it, not just in town, but also on their school sites. They weren't aware of the Quick Litter Pick Scheme in Borton Park, nor were they aware of our water bottle refill station in Chandos Park, but there are two things, there are two initiatives which actually really appeal to younger people. And the argument could be that actually they don't follow us on social media, because it's not that cool to follow town council on social media. But, you know, they're our best advocates, if we can get them on board and start sharing these initiatives, and that's great, so I think it's a fantastic idea to get, you know, those eco teams, as they're called, within the senior schools, to promote these things for us, perhaps to be there for the opening and involve in the publicity of some kind.
Sounds good to me, and John, do you have questions, I missed your hand?
Yeah, first I'd say I think it's a great report and it's a great success story, which is really good to see. I think it's, I think this deserves a write-up somewhere in one of the municipal magazines perhaps. What I would say is, I wonder whether we should maybe invite Buckinghamshire Council to consider having one of these, these litter pickers maybe in, 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 somewhere in the heartlands, I don't know, maybe beside that, those couple of seats, just by the dip, I don't know what you call that area, you know, where there's a big dip where the water collects sometimes. But there's often a lot of rubbish round there, a lot of people have picnics up on the kind of rise overlooking the river and so on. If there's one of those, these, these there, it might reduce the amount of litter that gets dropped. We could ask and, you know, tell Buckinghamshire Council the success and, you know, for, for a relatively small amount of money, it's, I think it's a very good investment.
Yeah, interesting idea, well, see how Chandos River one goes and Chandos Park one goes and that might be something to put to the Community Board next, in the next national year maybe. I've taken a ready book, so I really do want to just stick to one contribution.
Yeah, thank you, just on John's point, I'm just wondering if, if we approached county, whether we would actually manage a litter picking bin for them as part of our litter pick, or would they have to do that, because I can see that there's an administration element to it, but would we be sort of prepared to, to, to do that along with our others, collecting the rubbish basically?
Well, well, they already collect the rubbish from their park, so actually, when you're rubbish round, you just collect the rubbish from there, it's obviously fairly near, it's a duty.
Okay, we'll go and bear that in mind and then we'll see how this one works out and then if it's successful, we can put that on the agenda for the next match year and rest of the year. Excellent, okay, so I think there's a general sense of like with this. Excellent, thank you very much, just seeing how this looks. Right, so item seven, Green Spaces Complaints and Complaints Log, which is in the agenda. Anything you'd like to draw our attention to?
No, I mean, there are quite a few, you'll note that there's at least as many compliments as complaints, and generally speaking, we do get good feedback on our Green Spaces. And the summary of responses we put out there, obviously we take a lot of personal information out of the responses, so.
Right, it's useful for you to have compliments and complaints, one thing I, difficult, because people just see park, they don't actually necessarily define whether, when they're in a park, whether it's Buckinghamshire Council Park, whether it's Town Council Park, whether it's area down there allowed to use in the university, they just see park. So it might be something that we have to be careful, that when we get a comment that it's actually related to park, because I've had things in my Buckinghamshire Council division where you have to get them sorted out, which is easy to sort out. There's always a misunderstanding when people say, there's such and such in the park, that we actually, the complaints we're getting about stuff is to do with us. It's like getting graffiti removed from the park, I got some removed back in the summer because it was inappropriate, made it remove very quickly. But, but we do need to make sure and monitor that we're sure they're actually saying about, because if there isn't, we need to make sure we pass those comments on to ensure that, that it doesn't get the impression we're not doing anything, and also I'm sure Buckinghamshire Council, they receive them, want to do, sort them out as quickly as anybody else.
Anyone with that?
Um, yeah, just in, in the log, it does list who the, who the things are relevant to, so where it's gone to Buckinghamshire Council or Taylor Wood, we do lock those and report on those, but we have four different one, I think.
Thank you, yeah, that's, it's worth noting that, as you say, it's not, residents often know who's responsible for what. Sorry, for my perspective, I thought it was nice to see a number of compliments, because not everyone's forthcoming and actually complimenting councils and doing their own things, that's nice to see that. And actually, as particularly as saying that the one from the Fiume Direct News, it's nice to see. But I think apart from the point about the river edge maintenance, I don't think there's much there that we need to consider on our future, future agenda, I think that it deals with the issues in the paper, so we're happy to know that. Excellent, thank you, and I'm assuming you've passed all the, all the comments. Good stuff, right, we'll move on to item eight then, which is the exemption conditions for small-scale cemetery developments. Paul, you take this one?
Yeah, thank you Chair, so this is a consultation which is ongoing, that we're recommending we respond to, particularly on the two items who identify through three A and three B, it's quite a long consultation. It's been discussed within our sector and amongst other centres, it has raised quite a lot of concern, the proposals as they are, which would mean that our current, you, you would only be able to use bigger burial plots than the size of burial plots we currently operate to. It would mean some of the historic plots which we've sold in Rockford Road already, technically not be eligible to be used under what they're proposing. So the hope is that it's something someone's put together, not thought through, some of those historic consequences. So the proposal is that under the, the, the way it's really described, a small cemetery, as anything, any cemetery that varies less than 100 people a year, which covers a good, high proportion of cemeteries, I would think, because we're 15 people a year and we're not the smallest cemetery around, that's our distance. But, yeah, so the proposal is that we'll, would respond as suggested to point out, really to point out the impact on us, that actually if it's that big, it's got some historic issues for us, and obviously actually would mean Rockford Road would fill up quicker, which right now would be distinctly bad news for us.
Well, certainly on the 3.3, key three B, my initial assumption was had they included all the circulation space in the burial space within a graveyard. Then obviously if they talk about size of site and circulation of water through it, I do wonder if we want to just be quite clear that we would expect all the circulation space to be included in that, in that circulation, because that's all plays a part, burial part and architecture, of course, and such. That'd be my comment on that, but I say, I think you're quite right to raise the same, but Margaret then, Norman?
Yes, so more or less what you've just said, Warren, but I just wondered, because it was so significantly, such a significant change, I wondered whether there was some kind of either mistake or measuring it in a different way, because obviously the square, the square rather than the cube, isn't it? It's quite difficult, isn't it, so I, I, I thought that there's something that doesn't compute really, basically, because they wouldn't make such a huge change of the board.
Not a texture, anyway. Okay, hi, Robert?
There is a, I can't comment, there is a real question here, because we have effectively got contract with all those people who have bought land on the basis that they're going to, that's a legal binding contract. We need to get clarity whether legal binding contracts are actually, because to turn around now, having done the top of tests and had to defend a cabinet member of mayor years ago when the top test was done, I wouldn't envy the mayor at the period of time that this comes in, because it would be intolerable to deal with and, and also the public outcry of it, that I can't bury my relatives in my space, that I've purchased in good faith. It, it could be really, really, really offensive and nothing that any of us around the table would support, so I think we do need to see clarity on that. And it also looks very metropolitan, this, this thing, like it was wrote by somebody who lives in London or Birmingham or something there, I didn't realise there's a huge difference between an urban situation and a rural situation, in the sense that rural cemeteries are in different positions than, than they are in an urban area, like if you drive into Oxford, the historic cemetery's now in a bit of Oxford, when it was put in, it was on the outskirts of Oxford. I think we do need some clarity for that, and if we do have any concerns around this, finally, I think we need to really signal them to our Member of Parliament to actually sue these, because this is actually going to make any business case for future cemeteries more expensive, it's going to incur more cost on people when they pass away, if we're going to have to pass that cost on to them, we can't assume it, and it's, and it's, and I can't see the reason for doing it, and I'm sure that it's a mistake, I'm sure no one would deliberately set out to create such a possibility of disturbance. So I think we do need to bring this, and I think through the Chair, we need to bring back the findings of your questions and discuss it, and if there is an implication, should there's four capitals, we need to have it on the full council agenda, because all councils will receive the wrath of, of the effects, if we turn around to people and say you can no longer bury your person in a blousy bore, because the rules have changed. And then we do have to make sure we have all our boards in row, because I don't want whoever's in a position to be at the Chair. because I don't want whoever's in a position to be at the chair or be the mayor, I don't really want them to be receiving the front for that. Having doubted for me, you know, that in the past, I can assure you, when you deal with it, it is not a nice experience for the people coming to the meeting or the person who's chairing it.
Thanks, Robyn. I think before we rush to conclusions, I think it'd be useful if the time clock could clarify. I did notice that there is an inquiries email as well as a response. And if they're not forthcoming before the deadline, then obviously we need to submit the submission as it is with the additional suggestion on include, putting the point about circulation space needs to be included. Maybe just in the calculation page, in terms of the overall site boundary divided by plots, does that get us near to the beginning of the nation?
Yeah.
My gut feeling would be probably not so much. But yeah, I think we need to get clarity on that before starting the house running. Not for a necessary reason. But of course, if we get a negative response, then we need to explain that. But can I suggest it is an environmental committee issue at the moment?
Would it be useful to ask if they have a particular width and length as opposed to square metres? Because that, when you think about it, our current situation could be a one metre wide plot by 2.8 long or close to that. And it does seem almost that the larger size that they're talking about is allowing half a metre each side of the grave, which when the next one comes along, it gives you a metre between graves. So I'm wondering if that might help clarify what they have in mind.
We'll inquire and see if we can.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. We're happy then for the time clock to acquire and submit.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So sticking with cemeteries, I would read our top eight of nine and 200 grilled cemetery update.
Yeah, just to, no, it's a text, it's a little stuff. So this really is an interim report. So the contractor appointed is very busy, they've done lots of work, we've had several meetings with them. The first meeting they had with anybody physically in about 18 months, I think we get their offices and looked at drawings and ideas and we asked them to change all their drawings and the way they do these things. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have firm proposals to come back to you with. They're looking at drainage, they're looking at archaeology and hopefully we'll have the final plan and ready to go. And those final proposals, see with the drawing possibly costed, hopefully, in very rough terms.
Okay, thank you for that, and the report. All right, Robyn?
They did this archaeological test bits up there. Did we, I didn't watch them. We had any information come back from those test bits which would suggest there was anything significant? I don't think so. When I looked at the archaeological for the whole area and it's away from where the road was. So I'm hoping that that is beyond the archaeology. It will be, if it was farmed, there'd be what they call scatter, which is people, when they spread the river, they take things and spread it across the field. And that sometimes throws things up, but then dividing its lengthmen, which is a relief because they did, did recap that whole new look at that.
Yeah, that's good news. Okay, happy to accept the report. Excellent. I hope that's something more tangible to the passion for the new year. Right, moving back to parks, we have item 10, which is grass cushion regime in Borton Park. And we have a report from Lee and Paulie James.
Yeah, it's got my name on it, but he fairly decorated, so I must have corrected.
It's got my agenda, quite right, yes.
This is the word. So briefly, this came because there were comments about Borton Park, which we use to celebrate Buckingham. And this is just to bring a bit of clarity around what Borton Park is compared to Shandals Park. But Borton Park, the area we use for events like one for the man and celebrate Buckingham last year, it's a paddock, it's not a park, so it would never be, it would never look like a park. It's made a few times in the year, the ground is rougher. And if you get it to the state of a park where you would have an event and there wouldn't be any problems and it'd be nice and easy. And it would generally be better for accessibility. It would be a whole massive piece of work and change the nature of the park essentially. But grateful for the comments.
Thank you. So from my perspective, and I remember when we were doing the original park policy session some time ago, we were very fortunate, we have a range of park types in Buckingham. So we can, we can have Shandals Park and the former park with the hardlands and sort of the ventilating grassland. And then we have variety spaces within Borton Park. So I've not key, I keep this selection of spaces that's involved, wrapped of different uses. So I think we've got so much space that the issue was all homogenous and all manicured. And also, we haven't budgeted to manicure it to an urban park style, which doesn't feel quite right for us at Edu Town Park, unless I might have been. Margaret then Robert.
The issue was, you know, people like Christine had really struggled and there were a few people who's been specifically invited for awards who had access issues. And it was very difficult for them to move across that rough ground. I'm completely with you, it's a paddock, it's not a park. But we have got to think those issues through about how we can make it accessible, as accessible as possible, I guess. If we're going to talk through them, then, you know, we've just got to watch that a bit because we are committed as a council to be, for our events to be accessible to everybody on. And that was a bit of an issue on the Celebrate Buckingham Day.
Thanks, that's a really good quote, and maybe something for the events committee to just bear in mind for the future planning. All right, Robyn, you have a question.
Yeah, yeah, with the motivation, I question. The reason the event was in there is because we had to keep moving it with years of Covid. So we didn't actually at the beginning of the year plan to do it there. It was, but we needed an open space which was suitable and we had to cancel it and move it again. So earlier in the year, it would be damper and there wouldn't be so many cracks in the ground because the ground opened up towards the end of the summer, which then gave you the cracks. The type of grass which is in there is made of grass, which is, Chair suggests, a different environment that we've got. The only thing we could do is to look at whether we rolled that paddock earlier in the year to actually suppress some of the historic burns down in it. But by doing that, what we will do is change the nature of the environment of the paddock in the sense that the ground will be compacted, it will probably change types of grass that are going in there. We do need to make sure we do something about accessibility. Like, certainly taken board that we need to look at that. It could be that we need to look where we hold it, if that's the case, whether Borton Park is the appropriate place to hold it. Because we shouldn't change the maintenance ground scene with the park for one event. And it was, and that would be wrong. We have a dog show there and that seems to be fine. So I do think we need to look at it. Maybe that's a question, if you go back to committee, you look at whether that is the right park to hold it, if it's going to be a problem, or change the time and year that we hold it so that the park is greener and not so cracked because the ground is open up. And that's just what happens in the summer. But it was nice to see everyone out there and everyone seemed to totally enjoy themselves.
Okay, sorry, I remember a tool 10, 15 years ago, they used to be the annual Bets and Shandals Park, which were rather, because now they're a more maintained grassland and more paths, so it tends to be more accessible just for people.
Yeah, and for toilets.
And for toilets, yes. So I might have considered it if it was possible. I'm sorry.
Just to echo exactly what Robyn said, it was fantastic that we were able to have a mayor making tool. Because when, you know, it was a world happen. But the other problem with having, having had it at the paddock was it's a very long walk from the town to get there as well. So have we, have we even decided if this is the way we've done with mayor making in the future? But if we do decide that, it would be, we would need to think carefully about where it's held.
We'll try it. Okay, so I get the feeling is that events need to just give that up obviously. But in terms of our maintenance of the paddock and stuff, we're happy to keep this energy in the area.
Can't change the cost of the one event, can you?
Okay. Thank you very much. That was useful conversation. Right, item 11, the climate emergency action plan update, and you have another appendix.
So, what's the green?
So any updates will be highlighted in red on the action plans. So just scrolling through them, obviously, for normal benefit, we as a committee, you receive all of the committee's actions for council on the owners of the climate emergency action plan and individual committees receive their individual actions that they are responsible for. But the environment receives everybody's because it has an overview feeling like of the environmental factors. So updates that are on the report. So it talks about how Bethany and I have been to the senior schools recently and spoken about how they can get involved in community climate action. And obviously, I've talked about how they're interested in attending things such as the annual town meeting that's coming up in March. We've already talked to the full council about how the annual town meeting will be focused on climate change and various invitations going out to the local experts and organisations to try and get some stalls and speakers that can attend the event. The eco audit is currently underway. So our auditor has had a couple of visits now to the office and the buildings and lands that are owned by the town council. Paul, Lee, Jodie and myself are all coming, finding numerous pieces of paperwork to send off to our auditor. They can produce our carbon footprint hopefully by the end of next year. We've talked about tree planting event, actually, no, we haven't here, that was previously. Tree planting event, 16th of January, so that's Sunday, 16th of January. Members all recall that an invitation was circulated and I know a number of you have got down to attend. And so that's in conjunction with Buckinghamshire Council, the Buckinghamshire, Buckingham Society and the tree wardens. So currently, we have about 12, 13 volunteers. And that's not including officers from our green spaces team and Buckinghamshire Council, which is sufficient. We'll be planting 10 black populas plus 200 small whips. And they're all UK sourced trees, they're all native trees as well. Lots of berry fruiting trees for the birds and wildlife to eat. And they're all going on the mountain in Hartlands Park. Yeah, I think that is everything, that's all the updates.
Very much. Robyn, we further thank you for continuing to update us. Just, you briefly touched on your visit that came out of the local democracy week. That's something which is truly positive that at some point separately could react a bit of a brings on how what young people are thinking, not tonight, but you know, if you could give us something for the future. Give us a guide around where we need to work with them and things that they're actually thinking about. Thank you for doing that. The other thing, the black populas, are they, I think they're male. There's a shortage of, one of, I think there's a shortage of male black populas.
Well, we're really lucky actually, because Council of Hertfordshire has sourced a female black pop for us, which will be planted at the same time along with the male trees that we managed to source.
That's good. And we do want them to be able to reproduce them. And then we can get cuttings off them. And the great thing about black populas is they're easy, but once you get some, then go take cuttings, you can spread the will, having put a few in myself, that populace, you can just, they're not the hardest things to actually grow. But they do need to be able to reproduce.
Buckinghamshire Council has got a black pop nursery.
This is good. Probably somewhere around, it's a good black pipe, isn't it? It's probably in black form somewhere.
The nursery beds are two sites in Aylesbury, allotment sites that are owned by Aylesbury Town Council. And there's a huge amount of stock that Buckinghamshire Council Ecology Officers created. And there's such a lot of it now that it's now held by Linden Gate Therapeutic Garden at New Endover.
Excellent. Okay, any other questions on the complaints?
Just a small point, Chair. It's great when we plant trees, that's all it. Can we just make a plea that they are then maintained in terms of that they're needing watering the rest of it? Because they're not pointing planting when they die within a year. And I'm sure our town council would be doing that sort of thing. But it's nice to publicise its ongoing commitment to the wellbeing of the trees afterwards. Thank you.
Indeed, indeed, we're not HS2, that's for sure. Okay, any other questions or comments on the complaints? No, sorry, so really the next big thing for us in terms of public will be the annual town meeting in the Smith Fair. So a good chance to really promote some of this stuff for doing. Excellent, okay. So we've received and discussed that, so we're going to apply to 12, which is certain ways we usually have not reported. We already discussed this already, which is the tree planting Sunday, 16th of January, is there anything else to add?
No, not beyond, I mean, I would probably add, we do have a couple of local residents who have planted their own saplings from seeds that they gathered around Buckingham, who are also going to be attending the event. And I forgot to mention that we are also planning it as the Queen's, I'm going to say it incorrectly, Canopy Commonwealth, Canopy, Queen's Canopy Commonwealth event, which is later in 2022, but obviously we are so.
Let's read back from your council, I've been a little rapt of due to the canopy patterns over the last few weeks. So that's tree planting season, isn't it?
There've been lots of photographs on social media of various individual plants.
Indeed, okay, I think that's our job to hand up on this one.
Yeah, just what time is it happening on that Sunday?
I think it's 10 o'clock, oh, 10.30. I'll resend the email to you, John.
Okay.
I'll sort it out tomorrow, so I'm assuming this can. Okay, excellent. Right, item 13, Church Hill. I don't know if someone's casting that, so that's information board proposal.
Churchill, yeah. So the proposal from the Buckingham Society to install a board in the area which we're discussing.
Of Carthay.
Roger Edwards called it church hill.
Well, Roger Edwards can, we'll call it Carthay.
And it's a hassle. The proposal is for Buckingham Society to create and install an information board there about the history of the area, similar to the one we did about the former railway station. And it would be conditional on agreeing with us exactly where. So it would not be under trees because then it'll last longer, but somewhere obviously that's accessible. At least our land, so we've been to agree to it.
Yeah, so I've got no problem with that, there's more interpretation around the town. And so a very interesting history to that, on the size of the new church.
Chair is making a joke, it's very important, he's actually making a very good point. The, it is the site of the Norman Castle, which was built on the top of the Anglo-Saxon Castle. So if we're going to call it the site of church, that will be quite unfortunate because we'd have missed out best part of 1,000 years or 800 years of history. The church is a modern church, the original church, obviously, we know for that now. So I hope for all that. Pardon? Foul down a bit. Oh, well. Foul down a bit, anyway, anyway, that's, we need to get accurate history there, not the focal. And so that's the interpretation here, because I do think there's a lot of things there. It'd be interesting to have a sort of idea what they're going to put on in that report. Just to, just so if we've got any views, not to criticise, but, or perhaps you should have had this in or that in, because it's relevant. I mean, we were the, I always keep saying it to my family, we were the boundary between Bessits and Saxons. So I think we do need to immerse it on this. So we do need to actually have the recognition that it was a border town and it was a border floor. And playing a light park in irritating the neighbours, I'm sure. But we do need to have that in there. But we do need to have that, um, in there, because it's important.
So, to a good point, Sarah, so just double checking, um, Historic England, or whatever it's called these days, actually do call it Castle Hill as well. So I think we might just want to go back to Buckingham Society just to check, um, if they're talking about the church or Castle Hill. Um, but also if, if English, sorry, Historic England is there, right? Uh, they listed, uh, I'm trying to just turn it back from what? I'm sure it is. There are some, you know, we know it's Castle Hill.
Yeah, we have, okay.
Um, because it's Castle Street, it's Castle Hill. And of course Church Street on the other side led to the old church.
Yes. Correct. Which, how down did it burn?
Indeed. And the reason why I'm happy to put it on that, because I would always like to link it to St Rumbles Street, which is quite interesting connection, um, to the Lincolnshire Archives. Because of course, until the mid nineteenth century, Buckingham's part of the Tyrese is a link. Uh, and there was an original record service, interesting one too.
Well, of course, we were the part of the Anglo-Saxon, under the Queen's.
Exactly. Indeed. And of course, it's on the north side of the river, so it is in the Midlands, basically.
Yeah, yeah, before, before the Brownie days. Well, that was designed in a sheer of wars on that.
Anyway, as we progress, um, so I think we're generally keen to support, but we're just obviously glad to make sure it tells the full story, yeah. Uh, I, I, to be, I should say, actually, one of the highs, I did contact Robert, because I had heard about this uh, a few days ago, I did say, given my primary research of the church, just to know, I'd be happy to contribute to it.
Good.
Um, right, okay, so that's our support in general?
They're all right, they're coming, um, to be found, that's, yeah.
Okay, um, we haven't been able to make a decision in this.
Yes, yes.
Are we required to make decisions soon?
Yes, yeah.
No, we haven't, do you agree with that?
Yes.
No, it's good stuff. Right, um, item forty. This is really for information, the notes from the Buckingham and Villages Community Board Action Group on Environment. As, as a, um, chair, unfortunately, of course, I don't think I'm able to get here, um, tonight. I think that's probably self-explanatory, some of the stuff that they're talking about at the moment. Uh, the main thing, I suppose I just add, because I'm also involved with this, is pushing the Buckinghamshire Council, uh, lead to local flood authority, uh, to get the flood mobile to Buckingham area sooner rather than later. Um, so the conversation is still ongoing about how best to just sort that out. Um, I see there is a mention that actually comes out of the Spring Fair, it might be a bit later than we expected, it actually might actually be a good time to get people looking at it. So, um, I'm fairly agnostic about pushing it early and not having anyone see it. Or actually leave it a bit later and actually it's not even a bad one, people would come across it and see stuff.
All right, just to, it's the sixteenth of November making, these notes won't have gone back to the, um, I don't know if it's in an action group, means in sense, so these are really just as just a note, because we didn't make any comment because the actual action group haven't actually seen it, so so we should, they may have comments on them.
Well, the reason why I mentioned the flood mobile is obviously it could be tied up with the town council events, so I can't just want to gauge or happy to create it, but that is a good time.
Hopefully you've enjoyed it.
Yeah. It's really good to know, but I think actually thinking about it, there will be more people there and chances of actually.
I think we were thinking it could come because the Spring Fair is going to be, is an environmental thing. Come to the Spring Fair, and I think we discussed that, but we're not previous events committee.
My own, yeah.
So we, we were thinking of it and bringing it to that, because this is the most appropriate thing, it's all about environment.
Okay, so we love those. Um, then item fifteen, I don't know. Are you able to say, Robert, I've heard of a while.
To receive an update from the Hoots of My Project meeting, which happened just before this meeting, which.
Um, so, then we have received a lot of apologies. It was myself, Councilor Hemington, Councilor Gayley and Ruth Newall, the Chair of the Partnership. Um, so we received updates from various conservation groups, um, which have been noted previously at Environment Committee and at the Environment Community Board as well. Um, the one thing that I probably would draw out of the meeting, um, was, uh, the Railway Walk Conservation Group for Buckingham, which is, members will probably know it's our most successful conservation group in the town. And the coordinators, Jenny Manning and her husband, are standing down as the coordinators for the group and are actively seeking somebody else to, to step in and, and take on that role. I think this was discussed at the last, um, partnership board, um, but there hasn't been anything resolved yet. Um, I think it was something that Lee was going to perhaps discuss in the others and see if it was something that as a committee we could do or we could promote on their behalf.
Okay. It'd be a shame if that loses momentum because I hope there's some good stuff on the news. Uh, Robert?
Just noting the timing a bit on the agenda, Chair. If the meetings are going to be prior to this meeting, could I ask for you, Chair, that we early cite it on the agenda? It might be that, that those people who are not members of town council could give us an update and then leave. They're very cautious by doing it and then wait to the end of the meeting. And the, I think we should also, through you, Chair, um, write a letter of thanks to, um, the couple for the amount of years they put work into it. And, and I think they have done so much work, they've changed the environment as both the Railway Walk and the Seaford Walk, really. Um, which Derek, if you'd allow it. He would be reminding us that it's the scenic walk, not the railway walk, Derek would be telling us. And he would have stood up to tell us straight away. And, and I've heard it so many times in my, that year, but I'm never forgetting. I may not so, but I do think we do need to write to them and, and thank them for what they've done. Also, um, if there's a matter of promoting someone getting involved, if the community has changed and got larger, we've got lots of people who are involved in other environmental things that, that we should help them. If necessarily promote that, that there's opportunities to come forward and lead on the group. Because it could be there's somebody out there who, who's really searching for a project to do and wants to be involved in the environment and building on something that somebody's done such a good job on is a really good time to take something on, not when you've got to start from scratch. And also, I presume they're staying, are they staying on with the group or are they retiring? Because if they're staying on the group, they'll be there to help pass on that information and historical knowledge, which is always really important and which you can take over. So we need to find that out because starting fresh with a blank sheet of papers and everybody around you looking at it is probably not a good position, so we need to support them. Because we, we give them grant, but by the grant we give them, we get more than that back if they work. And they've got all the flower beds and we've grown in the railway walk section, which is ours, um, which are there now, it wouldn't be there now if we proved the meadows and everything, so, um. It's such a success. I think we should also, through you, Chair, after they've done that, we should propose them for, um, an award, basically, the community award. Because what the work they've done is, they've seen this and they've made no fuss about it, they've just got on with it. And that is what they really did in thanking. I hope that we could, uh, a, 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 appropriate time.
Yeah.
Through the Chair, suggest that they get an award for it, because through town council was saying thank yous, something we should do more often.
Indeed. Um, so just, uh, do you know first names now, or just from Chair?
Um. It may be worth, um, contacting a volunteer group called V C B to see if they would, um, occasionally consider coming, um, to work on it. They are a group who were closely working with A B D C, as was. And, um, the, the current ecologist at, um, Buckinghamshire Council, um, is also aware of their existence. Indeed, and I have, I have worked with that very group on, on the Railway Walk or the Seaford Walk, or whatever you like to call it. Um, yeah, it, so it might be an avenue worth, um, investigating.
Indeed. And of course, you have a whole of the residents who did very close to it now, on the T G roads, and it might be a place where there's, there was an opportunity. So I think one of the downsides in working behind the scenes and did it, is that not everyone actually knows about them.
And the other, the other thing is, once we get access, they get access through it eventually. Once the section one O sixes are all sorted out, they'll probably walk through it more readily anyway.
Yes, well, sooner or later.
I think there was, there was another local resident called, um, Robin Heaven, who, um, he worked on that group, I believe, and he was also a member of V C K, um, but he has moved away.
So often problems with these organisations.
Pandemic has changed a lot of things.
Okay, well, maybe we can find out a bit more about, uh, what is left in the committee of that friends group. Um, and if we can help promote, um, their awareness of the group and, uh, the call for new volunteers potentially, leaders of the group. Um, yeah, there's hundreds of new residents in this energy, we have no idea that the quickest of. Okay, um, and, um, I think Robert's suggestion of writing to, to the Chair would be a good one.
Well, if we ought to, whether that's something that you deal with, Mark, because I think you decide that much yourself.
Would that be an appreciation for the council?
Uh. Or if.
But we do have a special letterhead for the man after.
Oh, right.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Um, and just to go back to the area for a moment, um, I did ask Doc to mention to the Chair of the Community Water Project, that she'd be more than welcome to, um, address the commission, be given a reasonable excuse, I suspect, because she's not particularly well.
Yeah, but thank you, I'll tell you why, in particular, um, about the old village, which you've already considered it, just that I'm going, well, the agenda's not the conversation.
Um, okay, um, right, that wraps up the main items of the agenda tonight. Uh, so Chair's announcements. The only one really is to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
And I suppose, uh, who will be appointed contacts at all the Christmas New Year period, any parks issues?
Uh, phone the band line and email me, even off, hang on. I'd like to pretend I won't be looking at my work, even though it's Christmas.
Okay, right.
The guys will be in between Christmas and New Year, so.
And there is always, if you get bored, the litter pickers in Borton Park, to go and abuse yourself. Reach out and buy them the event.
Keep your hands off my litter. Right, um, we put stickers on the message. Uh, right, item seventeen, news releases. Um, I think the, probably the most relevant one for tonight would be actually the, the Quick Litter Pick Initiative. Um, because maybe, uh, which was mentioned earlier, actually recorded success of the first one, which has led to the second one. It's tough.
And that means the second opportunity in general, aren't you?
Yeah.
Not a second litter pick, no doubt, that's fine, thank you, sir.
Because if we do that, uh, the papers tend to get quite quiet in this time of year, so let's do it. And then, when we do this, we have a second chance to exercise the action group.
Yes, yeah, I know, for the practice.
But we can keep using one bit.
I'm not in control of it. Right, okay, um, so date of next meeting is the twentieth of February. I think a long way, right, isn't it? Meeting's closed, actually, it's the same to the year.